This Wednesday, council meeting to order at 6:31 PM on March the 19th. Members present this evening and myself, Mayor Morrow, Councilmember Steele, Mayor Protem Tahar, and Councilmembers Dillon, Kirbom, McCallum, and Mitchell. From city staff, we have City Mayor Andrew Campbell, Clerk Royal, and EPW Director Fordice. The rest of you in the audience this evening, we welcome you and we would encourage you to sign in from the back to my left. At this time, the chairman undertakes motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are members. As submitted, thank you, moved by Dillon, seconded by McCallum, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. I accept, motion carries unanimously. We move, when we come out of public comments, some of the old meetings, acting systems may come forward this time, may counter questions to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to leave is requested but not required, stages were named and addressed to the record. Other any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, and we will proceed to the one discussion item of the evening, which is Washtenaw County Solid Waste Management. This was an issue that was, both staff brought this to my attention and requested that we discuss it at a work meeting, which is why it is confirmed this evening as a discussion item, not an action item. I believe that Mr. Fordice will be taking the lead on this from staff. We also have Noel Bowman from Washtenaw County. We're very honored to have Water Resources Commissioner Pratt with us as well. You may be, his title used to be Rain Commissioner, they changed that several years ago. We appreciate your leadership and your attendance this evening, Commissioner, thank you very much. Unless there are questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fordice. Looks as if we've got more microphones this evening. Very good, so please be sure to speak into the microphone because we are recording tonight's meeting, and make sure that the green light is illuminated as you speak. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, the state requires the counties to have a solid waste management plan, and the county's current plan was adopted in 2000. Having 2015 Bowman Plan for Revision, yeah, we gave the whole public session, created the plan that's before you tonight. There's a requirement that a certain number of municipalities pass a resolution, allowing the plan or accepting the plan, but we'll find out later what the county's idea is. And instead, we've got Noel Bowman and Evan Pratt to give us a presentation, and then the, this will be on the next council agenda for action, pass that resolution now.
Well, unless there's questions for our EPW Director, there's one, Mr. Kirbom.
In the document, it stated about there were meetings and things held in October, late October, last fall, whatever, about participating with all communities. How do you know that?
We certainly received all the notifications, and we provided some data on our recycling efforts and solid waste quantities. And then I've been participating kind of tailing here in terms of possible changes to recycling, maybe more quantity.
Yeah, you saw that one.
Additional questions for our EPW Director? Noel, we welcome you here this evening. Thank you for being with us. The floor is yours, and Commissioner Pratt, if you'd like to join us and to date us in the event of any questions that you can address, we would appreciate that.
Thank you very much. This may be enough.
Let's do this. Let's grab you this cordless.
Oh, perfect. You're American, right?
Is that on?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. As I think a couple people have mentioned just now, my name is Noel Bowman. I'm a solid waste specialist at Washtenaw County. I'm here with my colleague Evan Pratt, the Director of Public Works for Washtenaw County, also the Water Resources Commissioner. And we're here today to explain to you about what the county's solid waste process is, county solid waste planning process is, and how it pertains to you all as a local unit of government within Washtenaw County, and the ways in which we're already partnering in furtherance of this plan, and maybe some opportunities for us to expand that partnership. So, really quickly, and Jeff, you had sort of touched on this briefly, so what is a solid waste management plan? So every county in the state of Michigan is actually required by the state to have an approved solid waste management plan, and the purpose is essentially to ensure that all of the waste that's generated within the county has a disposal capacity for that waste that's generated. And it's also an opportunity for counties around the state to set goals around waste, recycling, and composting. Where can you find a copy of the plan? I'm fairly confident that all of you do have a copy of the plan, so it's also accessible So, quick overview of our specific planning process here in Washtenaw County. So, it was triggered by a request, by advanced disposal, to expand their existing landfill, which triggered the opening of our county's solid waste plan, because that's included in there. And basically, what that prompted was the appointment of a 14-member solid waste planning committee, and that began in August of 2015, so that 14-member group. And they met monthly at public meetings to review and discuss and determine what to include in that updated plan. Essentially, what ended up happening is advanced disposal rescinded their request for expansion, but despite that, the solid waste planning committee continued to work. And we basically saw this as an opportunity to update our goals and objectives around recycling and waste management in the plan, but essentially, no landfill expansion is included in this planning process. This is just sort of a table, sort of summary of the different steps we went through and the timing of them, so I'll just sort of quickly browse through this. One of the stages of the process was public engagement. So, one of the things that we did is we rotated the planning committee meetings around to different locations around the county. We also conducted a public feedback survey, and we were able to get about just shy of 400 responses. And you can see sort of the table, this donut graph, that sort of shows what priorities that the participants of the feedback have around solid waste. The outcomes essentially of it is, so the plan in a nutshell, it's working towards zero waste. It's laying out a plan to reduce the need for landfill disposal. There's flexibility in handling emerging waste issues. There's a strong emphasis on education and outreach, and educating the community about how to recycle and reduce their waste. One of the main outcomes of the planning process is data. So we were able to get data from the different communities within the county to see where we're at, which will allow us to know where we can go. And it also, oh, is this, oh, here we go. I guess there's a, oh, a loose cord there. All right, I will stand away from the podium and hope for the best. And then to the right here in this turquoise box, those are sort of the guiding principles that emerged from the plan as well. This, really quickly, this is sort of a summation of what it takes to have a successful municipal recycling program, so there's six components. And studies show that if communities have four of these six components, then they will have a successful recycling program. So we look to this as guidance in developing successful waste and recycling programs. So I mentioned the guiding principles, so access and convenience is one of the guiding principles of this plan. And basically, what that means is that the community members have access, convenient access, to these programs and services, so that they're able to use it. An example, one of the projects that we're working at Washtenaw County is a site feasibility study, sort of, I don't know if you all are familiar with the drop-off station, but it's sort of a study to assess which locations could serve as sort of a permanent drop-off location for recyclables and odds and ends, like electronics, construction demolition waste, and sort of studying what would be the best location for optimal participation throughout Washtenaw County. One of the other guiding principles is more diversion and recovery and less disposal, so it's pretty straightforward. The plan lays out a plan to decrease the need for disposal through opportunities to reduce, reuse, and recycle. We really look to that three R hierarchy in the plan. Education and outreach. If people don't know how to use the program, then in all likelihood, they're not going to use it, or they're going to use it incorrectly. So the plan lays out steps that communities can take to educate and to outreach communities to ensure proper participation for all ages, really, all ages and multiple population sectors. I mentioned data and measurement. So basically, the data was a major outcome of this plan. It allows us to know where we are and where we can go. And some statistics that we were able to get from the data exploration is that we have a residential recycling rate of 33% in Washtenaw County. That's actually twice as much as the state average, which is actually more than twice. The state average is about 14 and a half percent, so we're more than double the state average, but obviously, we have room to grow as well. And then it also revealed to us that 66% of Washtenaw County residents have access to that curbside recycling service. And it showed us that about 300,000 tons were generated of waste in Washtenaw County. Funding. None of this is possible without the money to pay for it, so the solid waste management plan lays out different funding mechanisms and opportunities for achieving, pursuing and achieving the goals laid out in the plan. And there's a strong, strong inkling toward coordination and collaboration, which is the final guiding principle. So waste is regional, and working together, we can have more impact, we can be more efficient in terms of costs, we can achieve goals together. So coordination and collaboration is key. So, really quickly, in addition to the planning process, I wanted to briefly, in this presentation, just share with you all about the current programs that Washtenaw County Solid Waste has. And one of our most active, actually, our most active program is our hazardous household waste collection program, where we collect household waste from Washtenaw County residents. We have the most active program in the state, so through this program, since it started, we've diverted over 4 million pounds of hazardous waste that would have in all likelihood ended up in the landfill. Clean sweep program, so I mentioned the hazardous waste, that's just for Washtenaw County residents. What the clean sweep program does is it's a grant program through the state of Michigan that we use at Washtenaw County that allows us to take commercially generated pesticides and herbicides. So for example, from golf courses, we're able to provide an outlet for proper disposal for these businesses that are generating. Cleanup days. So this is an example of a collaboration and coordination between Washtenaw County and the city of Celine. We've partnered with the city of Celine for a number of years. We hold an annual cleanup day, held at the Department of Public Works office, and we collect tires, electronics, hazardous waste, construction demolition waste. And it's actually one of our, if not our, most active cleanup day that we hold throughout the county. So it's a really strong partnership between the county and the city for these cleanup days. Another one of our programs, shrink wrap recycling. So there's only a couple marinas in Washtenaw County, but they generate that shrink wrap plastic material that ordinarily would go into the trash. And so what we do at Washtenaw County is we work with these marinas to provide them recycling dumpsters, so that they can recycle their shrink wrap. Pharmaceutical and sharps, these are materials that we don't want going in the trash. We certainly don't want them being improperly disposed of down the drain or in the toilet, so we have this program that allows for safe drop-off and disposal of medicines at pharmacies throughout Washtenaw County. So we partner with about a dozen locally-owned small pharmacies that take from the public these materials for safe disposal. Zero-waste Washtenaw, this is one of our newer programs. What we do is we partner with events to provide recycle and compost collection. This is another strong alliance that exists between Washtenaw County and the city of Celine. I've partnered with the Celine Summer Fest since 2015 pursuant to this, and we've most recently partnered with the Oktoberfest. And let's see here, we have a couple other events scheduled this year in Washtenaw, or in the city of Celine, including in September, the Chad Tough Race, I believe it is, and it will be held at the Celine High School. So, and I actually have a meeting with Councilwoman Tahar on Wednesday, and we're going to talk about different ways in which the Environmental Commission at the city of Celine may be able to partner more with Zero-Waste Washtenaw to make events in Celine Zero-Waste. Waste Not, Environmental Excellence, this is an outreach, sort of recognition and reward program for our business community, not just businesses, but local units of government, institutions, schools, where we recognize environmental leadership in the area of waste reduction and recycle, and then we in turn recognize and provide technical assistance to these groups. So, for example, last year, the Celine B. Green became a member of the program because of their excellence in waste reduction and water quality. Master Composter, this is an annual certification program that Washtenaw County funds, and it's a seven-week course, and it's available to everyone in and out of the county, actually. And it's a great comprehensive educational opportunity on compost. So those are some of our programs that, the plan in essence, we wouldn't be doing these things if the plan didn't exist, so the, these programs are in furtherance of the plan. And then just to touch back on this whole approval process, this sort of lays out our final steps since April. So there was a 90-day public comment period, we did a couple informational meetings, as well as a public hearing, and then finally, approval was achieved from our Board of Public Works and Board of Commissioners this past fall, in October and November. On December 16th, as you can see, our Board of Commissioners approved the plan, and then right now, we're in the process, the part of the process where we're visiting each of the 28 local units of government within the county to get approval and support of the plan. And so you are one of our, one of our 28 stops in doing that. And then essentially, we estimate that we'll have 67% of that approval by early summer, which we'll then send it on to the MDEQ for final approval. And then we'll have our county's solid waste plan that's updated and new with ambitious, progressive goals. So speaking of which, the plan implementation, one of the parts of the plan is, it calls for a Plan Action Committee, which basically is a group of people that will get together and figure out, okay, how should we best implement this? And this is an opportunity for you, members of the Celine City Council, to get involved more so if you're, if you so desire, in that sort of implementation process of the plan. And you can contact us or publicworks@ewashtenaw.org if you're interested in participating in that. That will, in all likelihood, start convening in the summer or fall of 2018. So here's, I mean, I'm not going to go into detail about this, but basically, this is just the, another table of the processes that we'll go through for the PAC, or the Plan Advisory, or Plan Action Committee. And then, I mentioned really briefly, so the short-term sort of steps that we're taking in furtherance of the plan already, despite the fact that it's, we don't technically have an approved plan yet, but we're being, we're hoping to hit the ground running with this drop-off station feasibility study that I mentioned. And then we also are in the process of conducting a regional recycling authority feasibility study, and the city of Celine actually did participate in a stakeholder engagement meeting that we held in furtherance of this study in January. So we're appreciative of that feedback that we got from Celine at that time. And then, this is the final slide, so basically, I mentioned there's opportunity with the Plan Implementation Group, and then other than that, if you're not able to get involved in such a large way, please pass your ideas along to us, and we're happy to continue and expand our partnership with the city of Celine. So, that is all I have for you today in the presentation. I can answer questions now, and you can direct those toward me or Evan.
Very good. Excellent presentation. Commissioner Pratt, anything you'd like to add before I open up for questions?
Just to ask a bullet, Noel mentioned that we are working on the regional recycling plan now, and we're actually going to be providing some correspondence in the next week or two in the form of a save the date to walk through with as many communities as would like to hear about what we've come up with for a regional recycling plan, what some of the first initial steps could be. And they're primarily steps of what communities would like to work together. So we'll be sending out a save the date either late this month or the first week of April, that will be permitted to late April, just finalizing what spot we're going to get. We'd certainly love to see a representative or two from the city to really trade notes on what's, what's of interest, you know, as far as the partnerships. And of course, the county does, you saw the funding thing with the gold bricks, I was not able to hook up the trailer with all the bricks of hundreds and stuff, but we do get tipping fees from the landfill. So when we say partnership, we mean that we bring money to the table. We can't fund 100% of everything, but we simply appreciate being able to use your facility to take, you know, kind of sub-regional stuff, and we thank you really.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. We look forward to that invitation, and between staff and council, and maybe the Environmental Commission could definitely have a presence there. Mr. Fordice, anything you'd like to add before I open up for questions? Okay. Mr. Steele, I'm going to start with you, and I'll end with Councilwoman McCallum, and then myself. Any questions for our guests or for staff?
I've noticed, I've had a conversation, a brief conversation with Councilwoman Tahar about recycling, and we talked about, to some degree, trying to bring some of the festivals more fully into a B. Green attitude and the kind of serving dishes we provide and so on, when we sell items at these festivals. I know at St. Joe Hospital, it seems like in their cafeteria, they have some dishes, specifically soup bowls, that are made of recyclable material. It becomes difficult to find that kind of stuff, at least as far as I'm concerned, when you're out shopping or normal things in the grocery store or at the market. Are there places that specialize in these kinds of recyclable?
Actually, yes. Yes. There's actually a local retailer in our area called B. Green, B. Green Today, and they sell all of that stuff. So I generally refer to or help vendors purchase through them. And I also have a pretty large presence online, too, so if someone's not able to physically visit a store, they can do so online. And I've worked with vendors at the Oktoberfest and the Celine Summer Fest. For those like Lions Club and Key Lions Club, I've worked very closely with them, to supply them when they come close to a gold beef service ware, so that they are able to be their zero-waste client.
Where's their actual store?
Catter. Yep. Exactly. It's like almost close to, to Celine. Where the old Hollywood Video, I think it was, used to be.
I'm going to read this.
Yeah.
We really appreciate, too, when the host community is able to work with the vendors to have something that's, you know, contractual, and we understand that you can't necessarily slap that on people in, as a surprise the month before. So Noel has been bringing it up in the planning process, because that's absolutely the real difference maker between a 35 or 40% event and a 90, 95%, her track record is about 92% over the course of three years of this zero-waste program. If you say zero waste, you know, a lot of people will chuckle, like I did the first time I heard it, like, oh, come on, you know? And it's amazing what you can actually do, if you do have to have people help show how to manage things right on site. We give volunteers for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Steele. Mayor Protem Tahar.
Thank you. I will say that it was very interesting to read through the, to read through the plan, and I was pleased to see that a lot of the things that the Environmental Commission has been working on are reflected here, so it's a good confirmation that we're on the right track and in sync. Just one, well, two questions about the drug takebacks. You're probably aware, we have a big red box here at City Hall, but you mentioned in the presentation that, so local, small pharmacies, some of them take back drugs, but the chain pharmacies don't? Is there any way to apply pressure? Or, no, to persuade?
Encourage.
Encourage, thank you, yes.
Well, yeah.
Or, I, is that, is, I...
So, the good news is that a lot of these large national retailers have national takeback programs already, so they don't want us to come in and use our program, they already have their own, so that's what we've come up with. So, I guess, I think you might be able to speak to working for convincing.
Yeah, we're having to do the outreach to IMCDS and Walgreens and just see if they're already doing those types of things. And what the pharmacies take back, they don't take back any opioids, so those have to be in a leased facility or shared facility, so we always appreciate when we've got the partnership locally with the red boxes, that's really helpful.
I guess maybe one of the issues is also publicity for the, for the large chains. I mean, I, you know, I myself use a small local pharmacy, but I'm completely unaware that there might be, that there might be the possibility for people to take back, take drugs back to the, to the larger pharmacies, too. So, and the other, this is a, not tangential, but reading through the report and the requirements that the state has for 10 years of capacity and all of those other things, brought to my mind the question, doesn't the state of Michigan also, well, don't landfill operators within the state of Michigan also accept landfill material from outside the state, and how does that fit in with other state requirements?
So, Michigan has got a lot of space, and it's what you'd call, I guess, a landfill-rich environment in the county, so it's a lot cheaper landfill. One of the drivers of that is that the state fee that they put on every ton is a lot lower than other states. Currently, the governor's office has a proposal to actually put an additional five bucks onto each ton that goes to landfills. I have not done the research, I have to say, to say, well, does that still keep us below everybody else? Like Pennsylvania, material that ship here from Pennsylvania, it's not as prevalent or dominant from Canada. If you remember, you know, whatever, 10, 12 years ago, there was a lot of back and forth on the Canadian waste, and in fact, some places wrote that down. Our contract with our landfill here is pretty specific to say, if you're, if you're importing waste, you have to be able to demonstrate that it's coming from somewhere that has recycling and composting programs, and that we're not going to get those things ending up sucking away landfill space. You know, we're working hard in our state, or at least in our county, to reduce all of those things that don't need to be in the landfill, and we don't want that being taken up by others, so we're pretty careful. We, part of this requires us to, I don't know if it requires that, but we also saw an opportunity to renegotiate our contract with the landfill. We tightened up a few things like that. We added a penalty for taking more, there was always a ceiling as to how much waste they could take over a one- and five-year period, and we thought, you know, since you've gone over that amount every single year for as long as I've been doing this, perhaps we should have something that gave us a little teeth, because there wasn't really anything that they had to do, that went over. So the percentage-wise, you see, Michigan is basically netting more than we can count it, but then, I don't know if the governor's office is really trying to tackle that so much as trying to at least bump up the price a little bit, fund more recycling, so at least what's coming from Michigan is cleaner streaming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahar. Councilor Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for writing the report. I found it comprehensive and exciting as far as, you know, we have a direction to go. We have a leadership institute in Celine that I don't know if you're familiar with, but I'm just excited to hear your discussion about zero waste, because that's very much on the leadership institute, is that the co-work of community committees, people from private sector, public sector, who are making a community, to, for community involvement in the future. So I've been part of this co-work, I'll be there with my colleagues. So I'm really excited to take back this. So I'm really excited to take back this goal of zero waste that's very much for our unique community. That's on the mind of a lot of people. I wanted to highlight our simple recycling clothing, just because I'm sure we know that clothing is a problem in landfills. It stays there a long time, it hasn't let down. So personally, that's a service that convenes of being able to have a pro. I feel your pain with education, because I'm always talking to city residents about the local recyclers. No way. That's so right. When I paid a bag to church and like, yes, now look, this is a, and as a tie-in to your commercial efforts, and that's not, as you mentioned, we're not capturing commercial efforts. We work at one of the local headquarters, and the discussion was, your employees don't live here in town. They don't have that service at home. And we were thinking, it would be so great if my employer could somehow participate in this, so that, I probably just got this over there. I'll just talk to you about it. I will. So that, you know, just tie it as a tie-in for something commercial. And the final thing, I'm so happy that you're working with the Summer Fest. I too share concern about waste and special events. Our shirts have gone to the point where we're washing dishes instead of using disposables. For Summer Fest, if somebody who is downtown a lot wants to set up, here's an opportunity for increased capture during the setup. So it's, you know, last year, by the time all the merchants had set up, a lot of our local, and I can't remember, I saw some recruits, but a lot of that was full already. So even though more people were here, I think there's a really good opportunity to do a sweep during, you know, the kitchen setup, and when people are coming in, when they're all there. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I don't have much, I just wanted to ask, do you break down statistics by municipality or do you just focus on the generic element?
So we, the way that our consultant gathered data for purposes of this report is they contacted each of the local units of government, and they reported that where they were able and awful institutionally, they've welded all of that information to come up with the county.
But there's certainly a table in there that shows what's the tonnage per community for waste, recycling, total diversion. Most of those are estimated, a lot of those come from haulers unless the community picks it up themselves. But as you know, there's not nearly as much of the community employees for the pickup and hauling and stuff like that. We'd love to, someday, if there's a group of communities working together, figure out, you know, do we need more accurate information, or is this good enough? You know, can we see progress, or do we feel like we can make a decision? And I don't think that's something that right now, we're going to say, oh, it has to be something where there's our identity, this is every drug. But it is, there are many places where it's a contractual obligation of the hauler to report the tonnages. Some states have statewide software, they require that for the individual. Chos not to do that a couple of, three years ago, but they consider it important, so, on the data piece. I think for where we're at now, there's a lot of things that we could do to make it improve what's happened and where it's going, and focusing on the data when that would be the first step.
The other thing is that, I've lived in a lot of different counties, I've lived in a bunch of different states. This is the first community I've lived in that was recycling, it all goes into one truck. All I hear is glass breaking and then dumping. And I think to myself, are you just contaminating everything else that's in there? Is there not a move to go back, at least separating glass out?
Yes, I've got a really cool video to show you. There's a GoPro that just kind of goes through the whole thing. It goes through one of these facilities. It's from overseas that are actually recycling, like construction material and stuff. So facilities are built to do that. There isn't one really very close, Western Washtenaw Recycling Authority, which is a group of small townships. They don't process a huge amount annually, but they've got a facility that does that. There's pros and cons to it. The con is, a lot of feedback from residents is not liking the separate bins as much. The statistical piece or the data piece is, when you start providing people the bins for single-stream recycling, the trash quantity, it's, it goes down really dramatically. So then you're left with, well, are people putting things in there that shouldn't be in there? A lot of materials recovery facilities, reverse, they call them, will have, they have to throw away something. So they sort the bejeepers out of this stuff. It's very dizzying actually to stand in the facility and watch it operate. I don't think I could ever work there. Those rates can be anywhere between 5 and 15% of what comes in the front door has to end up going to the landfill, because that's really where it should be. There's materials in there that are not appropriate. So most of the feedback we get from the public is, that's a great place to start, is to have a single-stream facility. One of the things in the county-wide recycling will be to talk about, you know, are we a big enough region to have a partnership of a consortium of group of communities? We're about the, we're the densest population area in Michigan that does not have some type of inter-municipal cooperative recycling entity. There are a couple in Oakland County, Saginaw, Grand Rapids, even the Petoskey area, Traverse City area, and all of those. So kind of a long answer, but people seem to like the single stream quite a bit. The commercial side, though, particularly big producers of cardboard boxes, they typically are served, we don't have that data, but they typically are served, because cardboard, paper, and metal are very valuable compared to other recycling. Right now, there isn't much for glass for market.
Right. But doesn't glass, so it breaks, so it's contaminating that...
Yeah, the sorder sips that stuff out.
They can get the glass shards out?
Yep.
Because I had heard that there were issues with that.
Yeah.
They weren't able to do that.
They can do that, because it goes over, the conveyor belt will end up going over a screen-type thing, so the heavy stuff will fall out through a screening process. Yep. We'd certainly be happy to send a, we've got a video too of when we did the cleanup day last year. The, one of the groups helping us sent us their own video that's pretty neat. It's a minute and a half, and it's just kind of a, this is a Celine cleanup day, here's the rules, here's when it happens, and stuff like that. That was a really neat, really neat thing to see, they go down the whole line of cars. They did not, but I understand we're working on having a way to split that into two pretty quicks, so that we get a little more continuity there. Yeah, we were overwhelmed this past year.
So my last question is, I know that Michigan is considering putting a deposit requirement on plastic water bottles. How's that going to impact on recycling? And is that going to really kind of take a big load off of recycling?
So I am unaware of the most recent introduction of this bill. I know that this has been discussion since I've been in the field of expanding the bottle bill to apply to current waste streams like water bottles. I, I'm not sure I'm much political, I mean, I don't know the background of the bill. Do you know?
I don't know where it stands right now. I just, but I just recently read about it, and I thought it was coming back around again. It was gaining some traction.
Yeah, the governor's office is big on it. The Chamber of Michigan Manufacturers are not as excited. The grocery store group isn't as big a fan of that kind of stuff. But yeah, that's a roll of the dice. It would be hard to predict it from that position. But if you've got somebody that you'd like to just make sure they're aware that you're in favor or if you're in favor of it. It does occur, the recycling stream, the plastics market has not been that great for a while. The Chinese have come up with a five-year plan to require what you call a purity level that's way above what any US community, you know, would typically be able to accomplish. 10 to 15% is kind of the range for municipal recycling purity when you bundle up plastic and bale it up, and the Chinese are looking for 2%. So currently, what happens is, all that's, all our plastics, not all, but a huge amount of our plastic recycling gets shipped to China, it gets reprocessed into stuff, and then it gets shipped back over here, and they're starting to realize they can probably capture their own, they have more than enough plastic in their country to do, to just make the stuff and send it to us and not have to buy it first. So I mean, that's, I guess, the way the world works when markets get, you know, that's what market efficiency means, I guess. So, remains to be seen, but it wouldn't hurt us, or I think any community, if the plastic bottles just didn't start showing up in the recycling anymore.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman, your call?
Bottle deposits, I think, is a smart move to go for. I support that whole legislation. We've had to deal with trying to sort that stuff out, and you don't know what to throw, what you don't want to throw away. And I mean, primarily what it is, is it's going to, of course, be the Chamber Commerce fighting against it because of that business interest, but I think it's more of an environmental impact. And it's not that if you don't already have that kind of setup for those type of things, it just shouldn't happen. As you mentioned China, and that's been a thing that I think actually shared with council and some of it, that a lot of the stuff that's not going over to China is piling up in locations and places. So how are we handling stuff? Because I know the cost of, or actually the benefit of recycling, dollars, as you mentioned, is going down significantly, and they're just letting it pile. And even Canada's having a major problem, 50% of whatever they have is not being able to be shipped to where they used to. So how are we going to address our own problem that we can't really even use our own recycle? Or how are we going to dump that?
That's, I don't have a great answer for exactly what we do, but that's why one of the problems, one of the few things that's totally different from the plan from 20 years ago is to say, we need to work a little more on end markets. So whether that means, is there some, should we buy a glass crusher so that we're not, you know, if we're going to continue to take glass, whether we is a group of communities, or just a county-owned facility, or just a community recycle bin? What can we do? Who can use recycled glass? You know, what should we incubate? What ways can we incent that? How can we harden it by helping universities to help make sure that startups that want to, you know, get into the business of using recycled materials to produce a product that you can sell to someone or use it in some kind of material? You know, I know they've tried the glass shards, like in that rubberized play equipment. It looks kind of neat, but it just didn't stay glued together well enough. Okay, that didn't work, what else? So I don't know how to invent new things very well.
But it will be part of your...
Yeah, we want to find smart people. That's my strategy anyway. I don't know, Noel, you know more about that, just to...
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to say much, but basically, I think through thinking ahead, I think that this whole China, new emergence in China is really an opportunity for American innovation. So I feel hopeful in that. It'll be a change from what we're used to, but hopefully a change for the day.
And Ed, look at some of your statistics in here that have been provided by some of the other communities and cities. Interesting enough, looking at Celine, with our population of approximately 9,000 people and comparing us to Mylan, which is only approximately 3,900, we only have 300 tons more waste than they do. So how comparable are some of these statistical information here? Do you feel that it's, it's kind of hit or miss, or...
I think that our consultants that gathered the data used the, all the information that they had to come up with the best estimate that they could possibly do, based on the data that exists. But I will say that it wasn't trouble, especially with some of the smaller communities to get the data.
So some of these could be estimates or something of that nature?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't...
Oh, I'm sorry, some of these could be estimates or such?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, as a back check, there's national standards and average rates that are typical. And so the sum total, you know, kind of makes sense when you look at what's typical in the US and where do we have higher levels of confidence? Yeah, when we get from one community to another, particularly the smaller community, you know, the more you're likely to say, well, that's probably an aberration. You know, you all may be pushing, but I don't know what they have, does he even have curbside? I don't have a chart in front of me. I have to look at that chart every time. It's almost like we had it.
Just looking at how we move forward and how this plan plays out, of course, everything has a cost to it. Trying to figure out how those are going to be allocated and so forth. I didn't know if there's an intent to somehow address this through some kind of shift in taxation or any kind of thing in the future? Or is the funding still just basically based upon the tipping fees and so forth, or whatever the county receives?
Right, so if we can get a group of communities that think there's things that they'd like to see improved, and there's, certainly what we've heard in the outreach process is, there's some very common themes around local processing facility and more drop-off locations. There are a lot of drop-off locations around the county, but they can't quite handle all the things that are necessary. So kind of step one is, who wants to try to work on something? Step two is figuring out what is that and what would it cost? The county is certainly good for shipping in, probably don't have enough money to fund 100% of everything, and different communities, there's only two or three different ways that communities are funding their recycling programs in the county and/or, you know, waste, you know, rubbish collection programs. So it's a matter of being able to look at those two or three ways and say, well, you know, what would make sense math-wise for you? And even though recycling is never going to be a moneymaker where you're profitable for a 10-year stretch, on the other hand, it's pretty simple math to say, well, it costs X to send it to the landfill, and it usually costs less than X if you're sending less to the landfill. Whatever you can divert may still have a cost to it, but your total cost of all of that can be less. And I think that's where the rubber hits the road, once there's an idea of, you know, wow, you know, if all of us had a place to make sure that people take their TVs and tires, you know, we can see where, that would be better than having, you know, whoever the hauler is, you know, pick up this bulk of waste. And at the end of the day, that means, you know, different people's contracts run out of different kinds of haulers. And ultimately, it just depends on who's doing it themselves, what's the cost of getting rid of the sofas and the TVs and the stuff that most communities will pick up at curbside, either on a semi-regular basis or a once-a-year basis, and getting a contract that's differently. Many authorities that have formed, as we've been doing our research, have, it's no problem to form an authority when everybody's time horizon's a little different. Well, my contract runs out in three years, or mine runs out next year. It's easy enough to factor all of that stuff in and figure out, you know, how can we do something that doesn't cost us anymore? That's our goal, is the facility to take the process. If communities, four or five, eight or nine communities see something that would make sense that they want to have, how can the county help make that so it's not a net increase in cost? Maybe there's a short-term hit of changing things, and I think that's where the county could step in and help offer it so that people can look for the one.
And as for us, as communities, we always end up having to kind of double pay for things. And so being a city and then also having to pay for county-wide specs, awesome, it is twice. So that's where I can't hit my voice. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCallum?
I don't have much, I just appreciate you coming in, presenting this very informative. Councilwoman Mitchell, though, brought out something that just kind of tweaked my brain. The simple recycling with the clothing, we have programs that work with, I know we have quite a few resale, Goodwill, Salvation Army kind of things in the county. Is there a program where we're directing the simple recycling to them? I assume that they have quite a few things that aren't sellable, that they're not, you know, that they're going to be throwing away, or are they doing something to dispose of their materials? Or do we have a program that can give the simple recycling to them?
I think I'm going to go with, we could probably work together with you to find something like that. We've got a 48-page, you know, booklet or online booklet that has, you name the thing you want to get rid of, and here's the people who take and can use that stuff. And I don't want to put Noel on the spot to pick that out for clothing here, but we could help work together to find, either find something or find something nearby. Or another thing that we're going to work on coming out of this plan is kind of a mini-grant program, kind of like the county parks have been doing for the sidewalks or pathways of, you know, let's not get everybody into a narrow box, let's have something that's real fair, where we can create an opportunity where people know that they've got a really good chance of getting funding, to maybe create something that doesn't do this kind of thing. So that'd be a perfect example of something for, let's probably attend down the grant to pilot something, if we don't already have a way to do it.
Mr. Williams?
If I may, yeah, so I believe with simple recycling, as I understand how that organization works, the material that they get, they sort through, and the first, that's sort of the highest quality material is offered to resale, the resale sector. So it, what you were asking about may already be happening within the simple recycling process.
I would assume that they would have some kind of, you're not just going to throw it in a dumpster?
Forgive me, um, you were talking about the, the backend of what happens after the glue?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
So, she was talking about if goodwill cannot use an.
Or, you know, if you're taking, you know, let's say I'm cleaning out my laundry or my closet or whatever. I know, you know, if this is decent enough, I'm gonna donate, um, to one of those organizations. But there, there's stuff that, you know, that's not, you know, it's got a hole or whatever that, you know, I'm gonna put in the simple recycling. But if there was a mechanism for taking it all, like to Salvation Army and saying, these I think are good for donating or these need to go to some kind of recycling program, if there was something in one of those locations, I think that would be helpful. Even if they're the ones using it versus the consumer, um, just a idea.
Sure, handsome.
I'll be, we have a secondary market, so we use, we're sorry, um, we send in, we have bags or.
Right.
We have camera shots and whatever that is. And, you know, one of the, Jeff, you know, Jeff's, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's. And I'll get some information, you know, and take you all and take, just one of that.
Right.
Just wanna tag on that, please. I didn't, not necessarily read through the whole report, but understanding, do we have a, um, where the designation is, where everything finally ends up, based upon where all of our companies are, where you have all the recyclables and stuff? Do we know where, if waste management's collecting all of our stuff and they spread it out, do we know where it ultimately goes? Like, the clothing, does it go to the third world country or does it get shredded into something? Do they have any kind of requirements for reporting stuff that we would know? That's always kind of the biggest question that people always wonder, is it going to the landfill or is it actually going to be yourself?
Not really, we do, we do get reported out, but I don't think we were at a hundred percent of just which landfill did they take their material to. Cause there's, it's oddly enough, well, not oddly enough, if waste management owns a landfill, it's cheaper for them to take it to a landfill that's a little further away than the one that it advances disposal owns. Likewise, we have a pretty good idea where most, but not all of the recyclables go, which facility that, you know, is processing those. But I don't think we really do know, once you get to the level of, uh, things that are not going through a typical, you know, recycling stream, you know, where you have a, where you would need to have a separate program there. Again, that is something that can be specified contractually with whoever is, you know, working with that material. And even again at that, one of the cooperative ventures always could be, hey, what if we got together and we all just shared what we had in our contracts? And we looked at, uh, most authorities that have worked together, the first thing they've actually worked on is just contractual arrangements where right off the bat, you're just getting bulk purchasing power and standardization for actually the pickup agencies. And that tends to help a lot. If we're all taking the same recyclables in the same type of, you know, branded bins or containers. And so, like for Western Washtenaw, that's where the county, you know, helped finance, uh, for example, the, the curbside toters in Chelsea, uh, kind of thing. So.
Well, one, uh, comment, not a question, uh, for Noel. Uh, you mentioned, uh, Zero Waste Washtenaw participating in a number of community events, including Summer Fest and Oktoberfest. Um, I serve as the council liaison to our annual Celtic festival. Uh, so with your permission, I'd like to facilitate an introduction between you and the executive committee to make sure that you have a presence there in twenty eighteen.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good. Uh, and let me just say in conclusion that I've, I found the report and analysis to be, um, well-vetted and researched. Uh, more important, I find it to be progressive and, and forward-thinking. So, um, I fully support this. Uh, Mr. Fornes, remind me, this would be an action item for adoption at our next meeting on April the second?
That's, um, I think it's on to the second, might be this is the next meeting in April.
Sometime in April for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, well, the only thing that I would leave, uh, well, I, I would conclude my remarks, Evan and Noel, by again, thank you for being here. But also, keep us in the loop, because as you move forward, um, the saline community definitely wants a place at the table and would like to contribute something tangible. So, remember us.
Thank you so much for inviting us, you've been great partners so far.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate your time.
And if you do wanna have somebody on the implementation, you may think about that. You'll probably have nine or eleven seats that's gonna be discussed and are more post-words here on Wednesday this week. I don't know if we finalize it, but again, everybody will be informed of, you know, this is how many municipal seats versus citizen seats will be on this group.
I think we would love to have somebody at the table, very good.
Thank you so much.
If there's nothing further, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this city council meeting at, uh, seven twenty-six P.M. Moved by Dearborn, second by McCallum. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. I have that, we can adjourn, thank you all.